All right.
I believe I saw Mr. Enos.
Yeah, he's here. His stuff's here. He might be in... Here he comes.
Good morning. I'm Karen Rose, Sarasota County School Board Chair. Welcome to our December 12th School Board meeting. We'll be starting out with a website proposal and I'm going to ask Superintendent Connor to introduce this item. Please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before we begin, I just want to say we had the recent release of school grades and I was able to share that information with the board members. But I want to just stop here before we actually begin and really just send a congratulatory message to all of our staff and to our community for being 20 consecutive years as an A. This has been a very different year in terms of how state accountability works with the onset of a new progress monitoring assessment and a new assessment called the FAST test, which is different, much different than the FSA. And with that, being the first administration of that, there were no growth scores because in the first year of any implementation of a new assessment, you kind of start from zero. And so everything was based on strictly proficiency and students scoring at least a level three or higher on that assessment. Proud to say that Sarasota County has maintained their fifth place ranking. We will be moving up as the years progress. But in that, I will say we went from 17 A-rated schools to 24 A-rated schools this year. And that is definitely a testament and dedication to the teachers, the students, the parents, the administrators, those in this room who have been remaining focused on what's most important and that is academic excellence. And so thanks to everyone within the organization for that work. There's much more work to be done and things will look differently as we move into year two of this assessment as growth and gains will come as a part of that calculation. But this is a time, at least, to celebrate what we've been able to accomplish. And so thanks to all for that. As we move into the agenda today, we do have a few items that we want to bring forth as informational items to the board, but also to receive your input and your feedback as we move forward. The first of that being, we need to upgrade our website. We want to stay cutting edge. We want to be able to provide all of the ancillary pieces to make sure that we are able to effectively communicate with our public, community stakeholders, our parents, our students, in an efficient manner. And so we're going to bring today forth a website proposal and what is in stock for that. Also somewhat related to that is our ERP system, how we handle payroll, how we handle HR transactions and position control. We are working on a cobbled system that has been developed over several, several years and we need to be more efficient in that process. And so in order to do that, we need to talk about what that project looks like in terms of a timeline, cost analysis, and the benefits of doing that. So we'll talk some of that. We have our team for that. As always, as has been accustomed for the last several of our work sessions, we will talk about policy and continue to update several of our policies. And then Ms. Rose, I know you have some... You've added one item around board assignments in terms of committees. And then we will go into an executive session to talk about safety and security for a brief time. So at this time, I have our Director of Communications and our Director of Technology here, so Craig McNiglia and Joe Binswanger, who are going to take it from here on the website proposal.
Great. Thank you, Superintendent Connor. So today we're here to have a discussion about where we are with our current website and what we're looking to do in the future with not only website, but total family engagement and website. So it's a little bit bigger picture than just a website. It's the whole encompassing arena behind how we communicate with families, teachers, coaches, students, and the website as kind of the anchor to that. So where we are today is we have a website that's run by Blackboard and the... Oh, thank you, Joe. Run by Blackboard. And our... The way that we communicate through robocalls, text, email, and such through that is all run through this Blackboard platform as well. Well, we learned about a little less than a year ago that Blackboard was purchased by another company called Final Site, which is really just a website company. They don't offer the whole gamut. So then again, to stay where we were at a much more... The costs went up was not really conducive to where we sit today because we want an all-in-one that's kind of bundled together that work. So the support for that set, the site that we currently have, will end in 2025. So saying that, we currently are experiencing very slow response when we come to support. So what does that mean? If we have a glitch on the site, we have a glitch with something to do with like, you know, what teachers are at what school, rosters. It takes somewhat the three months, four months to actually get that repaired through this because we're a dining dinosaur to them. They're only looking at new business. So as support starts to dwindle, we thought it was best with the superintendent, new superintendent, to forge ahead as quick as possible and get this transformation to happen. So not only are we getting slow response, we have a difficult managing distribution list. And so what currently happens, every time we want to send to a discrete group of teachers or administrators, we have to make sure we have the most up-to-date system. Or then someone in the IT department has to rebuild a list, give it to us. We have to replace the list. And sometimes, we don't know all the changes are happening immediately in every school, so people are getting left out. So that's a big problem that will all go away with what we're all discussing here with the SIS systems and all the information that Joe's going to bring forth this year. We also have a rolling on our robocalls issue where you can actually receive the closing message first and then the opening message second because of the way the system currently operates. So again, all of this is leading towards... It's not a system that's currently up-to-date for what we need to do. And then not to mention, with our growing population, we have a very limited transportation option, translation option in this platform. So currently, you as a parent have to go into your portal, say you want to receive the language you want, limited to like very few. And then we have to check the box that if you check that box, you can get this message. So it's very cumbersome and it really doesn't work that well. So we are currently on a year-to-year agreement with our current platform provider, Blackboard, now Final Site, which will end in... We can re-up it, but it will end at the end of this school year, July 24. And on June 24. And then we can re-up another year and get to 25 with limited support, but we're recommending that we don't do that. We move forward, trying to make a move. So what we're looking for, which I mentioned briefly a second ago, was an all-in-one tool. So we want it to be robust and easy to navigate. We think it needs to be a very searchable website. We want the community engaged portion, the email, text, and voice to be able to be translated. And what we're looking at, the companies that we've gone after can translate up to 150 languages and you don't have to tell it anything. It looks out, it knows that your phone is set up for Ukrainian, for Spanish, and it just translates it. And it knows that when you type in Spanish, that it's sending to me that my phone is set up in English and it'll automatically translate that. So it takes out the barrier of all, who's going to translate it, who's going to get it up and all that in this one-to-one engagement. We also thought that it was important to have a very useful app, not an app that just sits there. So the providers that we're entertaining all have to have a very robust app, application, so that Focus and Schoology and everything sits inside this app and they talk back and forth seamlessly. And of course, the providers that we're looking at have already worked this out throughout not only Florida, but the country with other districts that have already gone into some of the items that we've just mentioned, like Schoology and our SS... What is it? Focus. And then I guess we're looking at Skyward, right? So they're all tying together. Let's see, where are we here? So we know that most people like to be on an app, right? They like the convenience of hitting that. What's my lunch menu for my kid? They like to be able to go to a phone and say, oh, I have three kids. This is Johnny. This is Sally. This is Brian. I click on it. I can see what classes they have, what sports they're in, what their lunch menus are, all those kinds of things in one application and one app. So we're looking, making sure that our vendors have that. And then a big, a big part of this for me is where it all breaks down is in the support and training. So we have, in a school district of this size, we have a lot of transitional employees. They come in, they work in the school for a year, they got to go to another school. So the setup of these apps can be cumbersome enough. It's not what you do every day. So part of the package that I'm trying to put together with these vendors is they have to give us all users, all support, 24/7, all the time. And they're agreeable to that. So that means every time we have a new teacher to school, it's not the principal, it's not the IT person that has to go down and set their classroom up. It's a quick, a quick talk with the company and they set it up for them immediately. So that's a big plus to us. So to have consistent family engagement is critical. So a building-wide communication system for administrators, classroom management for teachers, coaches, parents, and students is imperative. So many of you here were teachers or were in a school and you, you know the term remind or class dojo. So what this, what we've asked these companies to do, and what they've done, is they've put these, this type of equipment inside their boxes, but put it on steroids. So what it does is, as a administrator, I could reach down to a class or to a teacher or to a student if I had to, in any language they need to receive it. As a teacher, I can communicate directly with my student or their parents in any language they want to receive it, two-way communication back and forth on assignments or whatever. Of course, all secured and locked only to that parent and that student. Where we're kind of vulnerable right now is in the coaching aspect because we don't really supply our coaches or any of our outside curricular folks with a way to communicate. So they're using their personal devices. So what this will do was not only secure what they're actually saying to the student, it can also control the time at which the student's receiving the message, but it's instantly backed up so that anytime we get into a litigation situation, it'll be like, the student said this, but this is what actually happened. Or the coach said they said this, but this is what actually happened. And it's backed up every single day and on our server forever. So to me, to be, put us in compliance with state statute and really protect our, our students is what we're here to do. And understand that you just can't text my child at 11:30 at night and say, be sure you're wearing your orange pants tomorrow. You know, that's not appropriate, right? So we can start to, to figure that out and get a grip on what's happening there. So we've put together a focus group that is looking at these. So we have, we have a few companies that are going to do demonstrations and give like sandbox demonstrations to a group of principals at each level, a group of teachers at each level, and a couple of coaches. That's ongoing now and will probably take us up till the beginning of January, right? I haven't got there yet, but we can go there now. But so that's probably going to take us up until the beginning of January. So what I've done here is I've built a, a smooth transition timeline, but smooth being like it's a quick transition. So if everything goes according to plan, it'll be smooth, but there could be a couple bumps in the road as we go along. And I don't believe they'll be on the vendor side. It'll probably be on how fast we can get it out and get it through the regulatory requirements we have here as a district. So in January to February, the principals are still playing in this sandbox, but most likely by the January 16th School Board, I will have information back from these groups of individuals on which platform they like the best and why. I'm going to need the School Board to hopefully, along with another presentation, select a vendor. We're going to present probably two vendors that meet all the requirements I just discussed. We can select that vendor and then we'll begin design. In March, the design and migration will happen. You know, we'll continue designing and we have to migrate all of our pages we currently have into this new, into this new platform. Now, it won't look the same, but we have to get all the information over. And that's, that's a pretty arduous task just in itself. And that's not our staff necessarily. That is the company helping do that. And it'll start moving all of the information over, putting them in buckets for design of a new look and a new website. Then in April, we'll do a phased launch. And we do a phased launch because we don't want to just dump everything on every school and everybody's in chaos, oh, what's happening? So we will probably start with high schools and get that out there. And then the high schools will do it. And then right after that, we'll go to the middle schools. And then we'll roll in the, the elementary schools. And the reason why we do that is the elementary schools are probably on the website more than anybody. And so we don't want to cause them trauma coming down the end. We'll slowly phase it in when they're less likely to be on these websites. And then we'll do curator training there, which every school has a website curator training. And we'll help train them to, they can add their content and show them how that will all work. Then in May, maybe a little sooner, but in May through July, we'll launch this app and start building all of the, the situations where Mrs. Jones has these classes and so forth with the scheduling departments. We'll have that all built up and then we'll start training our teachers, our principals, and everything. When I say we, the company that wins the contract, we'll start training them. Just to give you an idea of what the training looks like, one of the company boasts a 30-second response and a three-minute fix to any problem guaranteed. Okay? And that's anybody calling. So to me, that's a pretty powerful statement. Now, if we can hold them to it, that's one thing, but that's a statement. Then we'll do district-wide training in that. So Joe, if you wouldn't mind flipping over for me there. So the project budget is... The good news is it's cost neutral, so for most of it. So what we're currently paying for what our application is now is what this website new CE message will come into now in Phase One. There will be a $30,000 one-time charge to migrate it, okay, to get all the information over. And then Phase Two is where we're currently negotiating with the vendors that we've looked at. And that's usually, this two-way communication tool is usually done by cost per student. And they're usually pretty high. I'm confident to say that the numbers that we've been quoted are nowhere near what people are playing across the United States. They're not even in comparison. They're pennies compared to the dollars that they're getting because they really, both vendors look at this as the crown jewel and they both want us, or at least two, three. We've got four vendors we're talking to, but two of them are doing everything they can to get us. So being cost neutral, part of the decision is pretty easy on your part because we'll get better, we'll have much better communications. And even if we don't do the rooms section with the two-way communication with the, the teachers, students, and coaches and whatnot, we'll still be better than we sit today. But I really recommend, along with IT and to keep us compliant with the state and our superintendent, that we really do explore the rooms option. And it's not a lot of money when you get down to it. It will probably be less than $100,000 a year to have that option for all of our employees to do that. And it's just a very good peace of mind for our school's district to not have to worry about what people are sending our students at night or weekends and not being monitored. So that's the presentation I have today. Again, it was more of a discussion to let you know where we are. And I'd be more than happy to entertain anybody's thoughts or questions.
Questions, comments? Superintendent Connor, do you have anything you want to add? Mr. Enos, please.
Yeah, thanks, Madam Chair. And one thing is, I know back in the day when we did the connected, connected, connected. And I know that that's caused a lot, you know, for parents. If you have three kids, you get three messages. It starts off, then it repeats itself halfway through. So obviously, when we're looking at this new presentation, we're looking at removing that piece and going to something that's obviously a little bit quicker populated by principals because I know that's another issue when they're trying to get a message out to parents. So that'll also be part of this. And the, and the only thing I would say is I appreciate you doing this. This is something, as a parent here, you know, one of the things I would like to see is, I didn't see on here, is with the PTOs, is if there was a way, and we talked about this last time, to link in stores. So I know like, you know, Joe's, has a student at high school. You get tickets, game tickets, cap and gown tickets, the dance tickets, homecoming, to be able to have that in there where it could be linked in with the PTO, with a store so that you would be able to go, so you're not getting multiple sheets. So I think that's something that would be really valuable on the app. I know that, you know, I had a kid in middle, a kid in elementary, and a kid at high school, to be able to keep up on that for 50 different sheets coming home for everything.
Sure.
If we could, if you would just put that as part of that to incorporate the store.
Absolutely. So what's really good about this is what Joe has now in Focus and what they currently have already does what you just said. And the Focus app lives in this app. So while you look at this, you say, oh, I need to go look at my kid's grades. You hit Focus. I need to buy cap and gown. I hit the Focus and it's all right there. If I want to see lunch menu, I stay in the current app I'm in. I've got a kid at Goshia, I've got a kid at Philippi, and I've got a kid at Sarasota High. I can look at each lunch menu. I can look at everything like that, so.
And just to follow up, one more thing on that. I know at one point we did where they were looking at an app for transportation for school buses. Will that be able to integrate in? I know that's another story, but that'd be something for parents to integrate that app into.
The Where's My Bus app can live inside of the app as you click the button. You say, where's my bus? You'll click that and it'll take you to that.
If I can add to the conversation, one of the things that Mr. McNiglia and I have looked at as we've evaluated these is the native data integration of potential solutions and where we believe we're going with the current solutions we have or future solutions to make sure that it is seamless to our parents and where they don't feel disjointed in their experience right now, which, as you know, as a former parent and I know as soon to be a former parent.
I'm still a parent. I'm still a parent.
You're still a, yes, yes.
Sometimes maybe not, but try not, you know.
And the systems that we're looking at are definitely smart enough to know that you have multiple kids in the school system and will only call you once and not five on a general message. Now, if each school has a message to send out, that's tough luck. You're going to get that message three times unless they're in the same school.
Mr. Edwards, please.
Thank you. Search bar for policies?
Yeah. So that, that's going to be a difficult task because I believe we have to probably switch platforms to get to the search bar for policies. We'd like to a board docs or something like that. Because the current way we work with our policies, they're not searchable. Mr. Connors has a...
And this may be outside of the, of the website, but you're absolutely right. Being that they're PDF documents and they're all encompassing, we need, there are definitely ways I think that we could be more efficient so that they are searchable. And we can talk about, talk about that for sure because I feel your pain on that as well.
Thank you. Voice recognition.
On the app.
Right. So whether or not they're going to be compliant with, are you talking about where I can click and it'll read what's on the website?
No, I want to be able to tell it what I'm looking for.
Oh, I don't, I'll look into that. I don't know if they have voice recognition on the app. I don't know why they wouldn't because it's available everywhere else, but.
We're, we're talking ease and, I mean, you didn't have to sell me on the cumbersome. I was already there. Last, last question is around the money, money. Cost neutral, explain that to me. Pull that out.
Okay, so we're currently spending about $139,000 a year for the current solution we have.
Just on maintenance to rent it, own it?
Have the whole, have it maintained and all that. The new systems, barring the $30,000, well, the quotes that are coming in are less than that right now. So for the, not a duplicate system, but one that encompasses everything we just talked about. So it'll be less. So when I say cost neutral, it's not going to cost us any more than we're currently spending. Actually, it will be a little less. Unless we add the two-way communications, which would then would bring it up about $100,000 more, maybe a little less than that.
And then when you say that you're under negotiation, that means we're going to have a new annual charge to maintain other, it'll be more than 100.
More than 140.
And so we're already saying perhaps at least $100,000 more if we go with this rooms option?
Yes. If, and I'll bring, that's the second part of the proposal. So this was like a discussion and then the proposal would be in January 16th when I bring you back all of the numbers and exactly what it's going to cost us. And what I'm trying to do to protect the district is to do a two-year deal locked and then a three-option year to follow with known gains. So you can't raise it more than 2% or whatever the negotiated price is so that for five years, we know where we're going and we can kind of plan and there'll be no surprises.
Music to my ears. But greater than 140, but less than?
My guess is the whole package will come in around 220.
Okay. Thank you. That's very helpful.
Any other comments, questions, anything? Superintendent Connor, anything you'd like to add?
No, there are no further questions. I think we can wrap up on this part of the, the website. I think, I want to thank you, Craig, for presenting that information. I do believe, just in my 100 days, it's definitely been cumbersome, the website. I think you've done, the team's done a great job with the tools that they have. But there are definitely other solutions out there that I believe can make this much more efficient for our community to access such the things as policies, our agendas, and communicate just with us more efficiently. So looking forward to seeing what these companies are able to bring forward.
And I do want to reinforce the policy piece. I think it's front and center, not only from our accountability, but for our staff and the community to be able to easily access that. I would like to see something in conjunction with the app that delivers family engagement, staff engagement, community engagement with our policies.
We will absolutely make that a priority and see if we can make that as user-friendly and searchable and all of the functionality that I believe everybody desires. I think, I think there are some possibilities that we can work on outside of maybe just this website, but other applications that we could find a solution to that.
Wonderful. All right. We're right on schedule. Looking for agenda item number two, the ERP project proposal and timeline. Superintendent Connor, if you'd like to introduce your staff?
Thank you. So moving right along, we have Mr. Joe Binswanger and we have Ms. Bonnie Penner, our CFO, and Allison Foster, Executive Director of Human Resources, to give us an update on a project proposal for our ERP system and what that timeline will be. Thank you.
Thank you for having us join you today. This is in somewhat part two of the presentation that was shared with you back in April when we originally discussed both the student information system and the ERP or Enterprise Resource Planning for our staff that may be watching. They're more accustomed to hearing it referred to as our business system or biz, but it is ERP. As we shared with you back in April, all school districts across really the world are built on two foundational systems. The student information system, which we spoke to you about, and thank you for approving the move forward with Focus, the implementation and migration is well underway in that. And to say that we are excited about what the future holds for us on that front is a significant understatement. Today really is the focus on follow-up on the ERP and what we found through that. And so with that, who better to hear from than those that live the challenges the most every day? So Ms. Penner's going to begin by sharing a little bit on the finance side.
Good afternoon. So on arriving in Sarasota, it was interesting to see the system that we were using. And quite honestly, I took a step backward. So it's been exciting to hear interest throughout the district to move to a different system. There are a lot of areas that I think we can create efficiencies, that functionality exists in additional systems that we just aren't fortunate enough to experience yet. One blaring example is, again, coming to my, you know, as I started here, I started filling out a paper leave form for the first time in 10 years. And most systems now, that is all automated. The functionality that these systems, the newer systems have just make us, give us the ability to create efficiencies and also to pull information out much more effectively and accurately. Whereas now, a lot of times when I need data, I'm either pulling it into an Excel spreadsheet and then formatting it in such a way that it gives me, you know, indicates what I need it to indicate or presents itself in a way I need to present it. Or I'm having to go to somebody in our IT department and have them pull raw data. to somebody in our IT department and have them pull raw data directly from the database versus having reporting abilities. Whereas, a lot of the systems out there now have very robust data mining applications that are user-friendly, such that most anyone can pull data and create reports that are accurate through the system. One of the other issues is, as new things come into the market, I think that new functionality comes into the market. The system that we're using now lags, and actually, we're the ones that have to prompt and ask, we would like to see this functionality, and then we have to test it, and we have to almost create it from the ground up. Whereas, some of these systems that we've looked at, or these systems that we've looked at, keep on the cutting edge and actually bring to their customers new possibilities, new ways of doing business, and recording and tracking their information that will only help us. So that's where I'm coming from. You know, some of the, some issues that we deal with too are, we have several systems to track our data. One that I will be very excited to incorporate are these, the systems we've been looking at, our P-card transactions. Whereas, right now, we use the bank that is, look at everybody shaking their head, the bank that we use to manage our P-card has a portal, and we do all of, we upload the transactions, we upload the receipts, and we approve, and all of that in that separate system, and then we pull the transactions into our main system. Whereas, the systems we're looking at now, all of that is handled within the full business package. So when you look at something like that, you're not only talking about, you know, just the idea that it is in one system, but people learn the looks of the screens and their security and all is in one system versus multiple system. And then you have a one-stop shop to where if you are looking for that receipt, you can find it when you're just, you know, looking through the system versus having to go to several systems. So again, from a business side, just that ease, that additional functionality, and knowing that we'll be on the cutting edge is incredibly important moving forward.
Okay. And I'll pick it up from there. And like Ms. Penner, you know, being at the school site didn't work as much in our ERP system, but moving into HR was able to see a lot behind the scenes and also notice that our system was a little cumbersome to kind of maneuver the system. And so in coming into HR, we have, we had an entire records room with paper records. And even though we were able to update the Winocular system and make it online, we were actually printing paper records to put into a paper file. So trying to, we have now changed that over onto a system called Axiom Pro. This system allows us to combine all these things together. And so it really puts us on the cutting edge. And when you look at our overall budget, we spend, over 80% of our budget is spent on staff. And so having the most robust system so that we can really interact with our staff and be able to provide those best, the best services that we can, I think is extremely important. One other thing I want to add is oftentimes, we're asked to pull reports and kind of generate different things. And currently, with our current system, everything is done manually. So when we're asked to say, how many people did you hire, or how many people, you know, what was the hiring timeline, all these different things, everything currently is done manually because of the system that we currently have. With Skyward, if we were to go to this, it is built based on a really comprehensive system that would allow us to produce reports. And all of you, you could go in and produce reports, so it's not even just the HR finance team, but all users would be able to go in and readily be able to pull information. And being, you know, data-driven, not only with the student part, but also to be able to do that from the staff part, I think really helps us as an organization to make decisions. So when we're looking at things to say, if we were to make this decision, or we were to do this, then we can see what would the cost of that be, and to see, you know, kind of that end result of multiple what-if scenarios, things that are a little bit, are extremely more difficult to pull today. One other thing I want to comment on is the applicant tracking system. You know, we've been working with Winocular for quite some time, and the Skyward system connects to a lot of different things, online platforms, so that when we're posting different positions, it's automatically going through. Right now, we're having to work with Winocular to manually set this up and say, okay, we want this position to go on Indeed, we want this position. So this allows us to automatically get those positions out. And then finally, one more thing that I think's really great, kind of piggybacking on what Craig just mentioned, it also offers a comprehensive employee portal, including an employee app, so that employees could go on, quickly pull up their paychecks and check how much they made. They can pull up how many days they have off, or how many days they've earned. So lots of things really, you know, kind of moving us forward in that customer service thing, as well as being able to provide data reports, so.
Thank you both for sharing that firsthand experience. I have the pleasure of really being here as kind of the facilitator of the process. And two things that Mrs. Penner and Dr. Foster mentioned, that I do want to provide just a moment of clarification. Mrs. Penner mentioned the term data mining, which may raise some ears, and Dr. Foster mentioned data reports, and anybody can pull them. So that is all permission-based, and not anyone can just go in and mine data, and not anyone can just go in and report. So I want to be real clear on that to perhaps disarm some concerns that may have been raised with that. But they are 100% accurate that with the appropriate permissions, that data is at people's fingertips based on those permissions in there, and can help them make meaningful decisions at that moment when they need to be able to do that. So with that being said, I'd like to take you on a little bit of a journey of what got us here today. And before I begin walking you down the path of that journey, I want to take a moment to acknowledge Mr. Jared Chamberlain and Mr. Vlade Nocar. They were the project managers, and really, I cannot express the amount of hours that they spent doing research, asking questions to our user community, asking questions to other districts across the state, asking questions to the vendors, to really get way down in the weeds. So as we come to you today to bring forth a recommendation, I can with 1,000% confidence say that every rock was turned, every question was asked, and the level of thoroughness is unlike few things I've seen over my years in this position. So up here is just a brief slide, just to kind of give you a sample of district departments that were talked to, schools were talked to, and all 67 districts across the state were researched. What are you doing now? Because that matters as we look at this. Through that process, and you all saw this in your read ahead, so I'm not going to spend a great deal of time, but it was very clear that there are challenges and concerns that our departments and schools currently have in the things that we're doing, or currently have in place. So really, to me, this, these next two slides are kind of the answer to the question, why? Why are we here? Why does this matter? And we have an opportunity in front of us, not only an opportunity to continue to propel the district forward, but truly meet our staff and also the community at large at our point of need where we are right now. And so one of the things is ease of use of the system. You heard both Ms. Penner and Dr. Foster talk about the cumbersomeness of the systems that are placed. And that doesn't only happen here at the district level, but that happens out at our schools. And one of the things, we had the opportunity to spend time with Mr. Connor and our principals during the empowerment meetings last month, and one of the things that was a consistent conversation from our principals was their need to get high-caliber staff. Well, we can't get high-caliber staff if the onboarding process through our ERP system is a challenge. So that ease of use and those reporting capabilities, remember, based on permissions, not just anybody. With that being said, we are the only one of 67 districts in the state of Florida using the system that we're using now. That, yeah. Let me say, there are lots of times we want to be number one. What Mr. Connor mentioned to start when we're talking about district grade, that's where we're looking to be number one. This is not one of those places. We are already seeing the benefits as we transition to Focus as our student information system to call the other districts that have found meaningful ways to drive student achievement with their student information system and the data that's in it, that we can instantly pull out what they're doing and be able to put into our own system. So there's definite value there. Not only that, the recommendation that we're going to bring forward here in a moment, they actually have a users summit where they bring districts, not only from the state of Florida, but all in, to talk about how are you handling the different federal and state legislative requirements that are coming down? How are you leveraging our system to better your organization and move it forward? In addition to that, native data integration. When you're with a company that is a leader in this space, much like Mr. Miniglia talked about in our communication conversation before, when you have native data integration, then you have the opportunity for not only a seamless experience for our end-user community, but also less overhead on internal staff, not only in IT, but in HR and in finance and all of these other areas where it just naturally works. The other piece that we're not doing is attempting to create various forms of data security agreements because we have these different companies involved. It's under one umbrella, as far as that goes. So continuing down that path, starting back in May, we began really identifying every ERP solution that was on the market and really beginning to identify what makes sense. At that same time, we began conversations with our purchasing department to understand how do we need to go through this process to make sure that we're following all the rules, regulations, and guidelines that we need to. It was a purposeful decision not to do a traditional RFP in this instance because we would not be able to gain the full scope of feedback that we would in the process that we went down. But we made sure, in working with our purchasing department, that all rules and regulations were followed, because what we didn't want is at the end of this process for somebody to come in and call foul and say, no, you didn't do it right, or you didn't play fair, or whatever. So we followed kind of a modified RFP process and worked in conjunction with our purchasing department along the way, every step of the way, to make sure that we could come to you with confidence today with this piece. So many buttons, and I don't even need one here. Sorry about that. So then, through that process, we really began to narrow down what were the offerings and what was capable, and finding a solution that met our needs. I want to give an example of one of the solutions that we were looking at that we didn't go with, SAP. And the reason I'm bringing that is, they are a mega provider of ERPs. And major, some of the largest districts in the country do use SAP, but they also have buildings full of programmers that are working to manipulate those systems. That's not a system for a district our size. So beginning to narrow it down. So we narrowed it down. At that same time, we identified all the key stakeholders in HR and finance to be part of this evaluation committee, because again, the IT department was really the facilitator of the conversation and making sure that the technical and security aspects were met and identified, or identified and met. But it really needed to be the end-user that was driving what was the best solution in that. Through that process, we narrowed it down to two primary solutions, Skyward and Power School. Both companies came in and did a number of presentations to the group. Follow-up questions were able to be asked and answered. And that all took place during this past summer. In August, and at the end of all of those conclusions, we had surveys and follow-up questions in late July and early August, the group came back together and we went through the analysis of the surveys, the questions, all that. And so this is the part that I want to be real clear in. There is no perfect ERP solution. Honestly, there is no perfect software out there despite what Microsoft or Apple or anybody else might say, right? But through this process, the committee did very clearly say there is significantly better solutions than what we're currently using. And through that process, Skyward is the solution that best met Sarasota's needs. From that, we've been, and that consensus was across HR and finance. And one of the questions internally that IT had as we went into this process of facilitating it was, how much compromise would the two areas need to be? Because their needs are a little bit different from the HR and finance perspective. But I'm very pleased to share that both groups came to the same consensus, so there didn't have to be as much compromise as we thought there might be. So that was nice. Coming out of that, we did inform Power School that the district did identify Skyward as a better solution. While disappointed, they understood, because we do use Power School for other solutions in the district, School ogy, Performance Matters. And so they're happy to still be partners with the district. Skyward was obviously thrilled at the news. So we've been working through potential contract and data migration, all of that. I do, before we get into that, I did want to mention, after the group made the consensus with Skyward, we did want to kind of close loop on that research in the solutions. And the slide up here, you can see that Skyward is the leader, not only in the state, but in districts our size. And interestingly enough, 20 of 67 districts in the state of Florida are using Skyward as their ERP and Focus as their SIS. So when we talk about collaborative efforts across the state, that definitely is an advantage for us as we move forward with this. So as we get ready to talk about cost, we've been spending time working with Skyward to really be able to come in and have some clear conversation with you about, well, what does a migration look like? Because depending on who you talk to, and Mrs. Penner and I've talked numerous times about it along with Dr. Foster, an ERP migration can bring some gray hair to people. But with proper planning and dialogue, it can be definitely managed. So with that, I thought I'd let Ms. Penner speak a little bit about her experience in implementation, because she's done this numerous times.
So just, and I did make sure that my voting was not a weighing factor in the selection of Skyward, but I have been in two previous districts and used Skyward, and in both districts, I implemented the Skyward application. We were using a terms-based solution, which the current solution, or the current business product we're using now is based on the old-term software. So I have done two conversions of that, and they were in smaller districts, of course, but it was around a six-month conversion. They really have a high level of understanding of what we do in a Florida school district, as well as taking the data from the tables as they are set up in a terms-like solution and migrating it into their platform. So it really comes off, I don't want to say smooth, because that's, that would not be a word I'd want to use right now, but they just have a lot of knowledge and a lot of experience in making these types of implementations. And again, just the functionality that is available through Skyward and Power School. They were both very high-level, very capable solutions, but I just think we're going to see such a positive implementation. I'm just looking forward to it.
And as you look at the slide, so our initial upfront costs to do the implementation and transition would be, we'll say around $1.25 million. And then our annual ongoing cost from that point would be around $200, and we'll just say $30,000, which is less than what we're currently paying for our current solutions, which does not include. So kind of before, when we were talking communication, we got to move with greater functionality for basically the same cost. Here, we're actually going down in cost, and our functionality and capabilities will exponentially rise in that arena. Some of the things that we can't tangibly provide to you as like cost savings will be the savings of time for staff. Along that, in drawing a parallel to what we're seeing in our, so right now, we're going through what we call business process owner meetings for the SIS implementation. And in one of those, a staff member, we are bringing members of school staff in to see and get their feedback and make sure things are being set up the right way. And a staff member, actually from Riverview High School, was in one of the meetings, and she said, am I going to have a job after this? Are you guys going to need me? And we're like, no, 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 you're not getting it. Like, you're actually going to be able to do your job because you're not doing all this. this other labor-intensive work. And so that's one of the things that we can't tangibly bring to you as a cost savings, but the time that staff will be able to spend on more meaningful tasks is definitely part of this proposal. So with that, this would be a sample timeline. Part of the reason for our conversation today is, so just like with the student information system, the student information system has one definite time you transition. Master scheduling is the kickoff of that. You have to be ready. We're getting ready to do that. That's clear. ERP is a little more fluid, but we would like to be able to be live starting January 2025. But in order to do that, we need to bring the contract to you in that first board meeting in January to sign to get us ready for that place. I know that very much the finance and HR departments would like to do that because then that'll bring us into alignment with the various tax information, the hiring season. I mean, and truth be told, they'd like it if we could be live January of 2024. We don't have that kind of magic wand, but you know, that brings us in line with the fiscal year. What we wanted to do is, so these are our major systems, right? And so we wanted you to be able to kind of see, this is our current SIS implementation timeline that we're on right now. And knock on wood, we're in a very good place with that as we sit today. As we look at the two, there is some overlap, and that is a demand on staff's time. And so part of the reason we bring that up is, we would be, need to be very judicious in anything else that we wanted to take on that was new as part of this. There are other things that we can add to that conversation, most definitely, but if the board had the inclination to, I probably should have thought of a good example here of something a little more outside the box than we would normally think of. That may be something that we would want to look at post-January of 2025. But again, I want to be clear, it's not to say that other initiatives can't be part of this. We're just being judicious in the things that we're choosing, and especially any type of initiative that is major system-related. That's with that. So with that being said, questions?
I have a comment relative to hiring the highest-quality staff. And as a former principal, our system is, to say the least, archaic. Will principals, cost center heads, and actual applicants be able to see pieces they're missing and when it's, when actually everything is complete and an applicant is hirable?
And we have made changes to the monocular system. It's just when you log in, it is not a user-friendly system. And so this is much more user-friendly in what they're able to see, so they're not having to kind of go through. It's there, but not user-friendly in what they see. So yes, this provides a much more user-friendly format in showing what they're missing. I think another thing I want to comment on too, when applicants go to apply for Sarasota County schools, they go specifically, because we are the only one really using this monocular system, they're going in and doing an application specifically just for our system. When we're using what many other districts, they can put a, they can put an application into the Skyward system, and then they're able to click and say, I want to apply for this job. And Sarasota County want to apply for this job potentially in another district so that when you get new grads coming out of college, typically they're applying in sometimes multiple districts and they're not having to, our current system, they have to be very specific to say, I just want Sarasota. They have to be very specific in applying specifically to our jobs and then monitoring the monocular system. So yes, to answer your question along, yes, it provides a much more user-friendly format to provide.
Just not user-friendly, cost center heads and applicants will actually be able to see my application. The application is complete, this candidate is hirable right now and/or what is missing.
And yes, and that has been added to ours, it's just not as user-friendly in the monoculars.
It's not the perception of the users, but I understand the user-friendliness of it. And master scheduling being front and center for instruction and learning, I'm sure that master schedulers have been part of the timeline and input into the advantages from an instructional standpoint.
So master schedulers wouldn't have any direct involvement with the ERP system. They have been directly involved with the SIS implementation in that aspect.
Perfect. Thank you. Questions, comments? Mr. Edwards, please.
Thank you. Joe, I think you're starting to get to know me because you talked about, I don't know if we're going to save headcount, but I'm going to challenge that because we don't, people don't lose their jobs here. So I want to start by having that conversation, that it would happen through natural attrition. But is it possible, and have you seen Skyward? Because I heard of gains of efficiency, gains of productivity. Usually that does lead to savings in headcount, which can be translated to raises. So I'm not trying to scare people. I'm just trying to say that there's an opportunity, I'm hearing, in efficiency and productivity to streamline and look at headcount.
Well, I think it's definitely something that we would be looking at. One of the things that we're noticing, you know, we're getting ready, we're processing a raise package right now, and the timing of doing something like that is always tight. And we're, we've got folks working overtime and really lots of checks and double checks and processes to do that type of review of the data that's been keyed in or the data that's been updated, that I think will see, you know, create a better response. I think we'll find that the data is more accurate, so the reviews are not going to be as cumbersome as they are now. So in my mind, we will likely see a good drop in overtime, where folks are killing themselves trying to get things done quickly and accurately, and definitely look at headcount. But at this point, I'm not sure because we really do run a pretty tight ship, but it's definitely something to look at.
And I would add to that, Mr. Edwards, that ask us in 12 to 15 months from now. The other question I would have is, what initiatives are we as a district going to be looking at in 12 to 15 months? Because what staff is, what staff was doing 10 years ago is very different than what staff is doing today, and what I would anticipate staff to be doing 18 to 24 months from now, especially as we recognize and realize these efficiencies in the systems and the capabilities. We have some incredibly creative and intelligent staff members across our district and beginning to ask, hey, what, could we do X or Y or Z? And the adaptability of our staff to begin to meet those new needs that we don't even realize that we have just yet.
Thank you.
Mr. Ynus.
Well, thank you. You know, I remember back then, we talked, when we just talked about surveys and you're talking about taking an Excel spreadsheet and have to driving it down to Osprey for them to be able to input it, and people didn't understand really how archaic it is. And I want to say thanks for all your walk three, your work, because just in reference to processing non-instructional employees on overtime and just hourly, just for payroll, I could tell you with the 61 officers we had at the police department, that was almost a day and a half of non, just entry where most places, it's, the employee does it self-populated, the supervisor signs off or whichever, and it does. So the efficiency, I think, will be huge just to be able to get us to where we are. And, you know, when you brought us to us, I mean, thank you for doing this because obviously we're in education and as technology is increasing, our students need to have that. You know, we need to have the best tools available for our teachers and our staff, you know, for just to be able to retention as well as recruiting the best and having people wanting to live in Sarasota County because we know this is the best place to live. So I just want to say thanks because I know the efficiency just on that side will go up, especially not having to deal with monocular. That's challenging to try to get people through that process who are looking for employment. So I just want to say thanks for what you guys did. I think that's incredible.
You're welcome. And we didn't even necessarily get into all the capabilities and functionalities that we're looking at. I mean, there's time and attendance apps for staff to be able to log in and log out, or clock in and clock out of work based on geofencing. I mean, there's so many opportunities in front of us that make us a, not just a modern workplace, but a place that people come and are not, not just proud because of the academic achievement, but because of the quality of life of working here.
Ms. Marinelli.
Thank you. This is very interesting because the comment that you made just a few minutes ago, Joe, about how ask the question in five to 10 years. Well, listening to the presentation, we're way backwards because I've been retired a while and we're still with the same system, and it was very hard back then. So I can't even imagine what you're going through all these years later. So thank you. But, and maybe I'm jumping the gun, but, and tell me, because when we're talking about future or is it something now, let's just take pupil support services and all the online things that they have to do, whether it's ESE and IEPs, 504, the whole MTSS process. Will this all go eventually into this, or is this going to be, that will be all separate?
Well, so, so I want to be real clear here. Separate from the ERP conversation, but completely integrated in the student information system, and we are in process of doing and working on that right now. We, Mr. Connor was part of the conversation where we were talking about how potentially different our district looks in a multitude of positive ways in the next 12 to 18 months is significant. And all of it is with a silver lining. It's not, and I want to be clear, not to say we may not have some bumps and things along the way because it's integration, it's technology, it's all of those things, but where we are headed is exciting, to say the least.
Well, thank you, because I know that that'll be a nice relief for people. And again, it's that saving the money of what people have to do paper, or you know, versus what they'll be able to do with their job. So thank you.
And while it's a little bit of a silly example, it is a real example, talking about the Business Process Owners Meeting with our Student Information System Implementation. Ms. Deb Jacklin, on the Student Services side, when we were meeting with her, she actually said, hold on, I have to get up. And she jumped for joy in the meeting because she was so excited about where we were going with the Student Information System piece.
I can imagine. I would be too. So good, thank you.
Anyone else? Wonderful.
Well, so I am one who likes as least clear direction as we can. So I just, I guess Superintendent Connor, is there anything else that you or the board need before we would look to bring a contract forward for the January board meeting?
So to the board members, that is our next phase, would bring an item to the board to move this along so that we can hit for 2025, January 2025, implementation of our ERP system. And connected to that, I'll go backwards a little bit and talk about the website. We would also bring an agenda item in January for that to progress as well on that timeline that was shared previously. So that's where we're headed, and if there's any questions about that, if not, we'll move forward. But that is our intention, is to bring those items forth next month.
Well done. Thank you. Very thorough. And moving on, item number three, policy updates. Superintendent Connor, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, we have Mr. Parento, our Director of Governmental, our Supervisor of Governmental Affairs, coming to share with you some additional policies up for revision.
Thank you, Superintendent Connor, and members of the school board for allowing me to be here today. We'll kind of go through these just like we have previously. We can take them one by one, and if there are any questions, comments, concerns, or suggestions, we can work through those so that we can eventually move these forward and get them advertised and approved. We'll start with just a little bit of an overview like we did last time. At this point, we have reviewed 330 policies from the school board. 60 of those have been revised at this point, and many of those have either been brought to you previously or are being brought forth today. And we have 37 that we have made note of that need to be reviewed a little bit further, and we'll hopefully be bringing those policies to you over the next few work sessions. So the first one that we're bringing forth today is Policy 9.10, Parent Organizations and School Support Groups. And the addition here is just a line to reference the School Support Organization Guidelines that we have. There's currently no reference in there, but those do need to be followed by booster clubs and different support organizations like that, as well as an annual review and update of those guidelines. And Mr. Duggan and Mr. Slaton and myself have already reviewed some of those procedures and the guidelines and made some recommendations on what we need to add, including that these different support organizations would need an annual audit or a, an independent audit if requested by the board or by the district.
Also, things like following the law, using best financial practices, just because they are representing themselves and holding themselves out as representatives of the district when they're out fundraising. We want that to be done in a school board-based way that is compliant.
Next policy is Policy 7.41, Outside Organizations. And this is the same addition in there and referencing in there of those School Support Organization Guidelines. The next policy is 3.43. This is a new policy that came kind of out of HB 379 last year. The districts have to adopt an internet safety policy. And in working with Mr. Duggan and Mr. Binzwanger, we had a lot of these items already in place. They were just not all together in one place. So we wanted to take this and put everything together formally into one specific policy because it's just easier for people that are looking for these different items to be able to find them all in one place. And we also added an exclusion based on the use of AI and how it's the emerging technology and people are using it in different ways, and we know that it's being used in schools. But we added an exclusion that personal devices or credentials used on AI, the district is not responsible for the data that is shared over that technology. Next policy is 4.60. This is District and Statewide Assessments. We put in a new update based on legislative changes in DOE rule from last year, that Florida Virtual Students who are military students residing outside of the state are afforded additional flexibility on some of the testing that they have to take every year. And there are certain things that have to be done from a district perspective to present those tests for students. So we're just making sure that we get that put into policy. Policy 9.30 is Use of Facilities. It adds additional prohibited uses of school facilities as were defined by the legislature in Statute 255.70.
Mr. Ynus, please.
In reference to that, because I know I've been involved in that, the use of the facilities, is there, and I went through there, there's, is there any safety requirement, which I don't believe is in there, in reference to, let's say, as an example, you bring in a jamboree of youth football, and they use one of our fields, is there a requirement based upon, or was it looked at? And I don't think that it's, it's, there is no national standard for that, just as there was no national standard for safety. Is that something in there that we would say, per X amount of people, they would require a law enforcement officer or some type of safety protocol, AED, first aid ambulance? They do that for, the FHSAA has some guidelines, but not necessarily when we're renting them out because we've received requests as, when I was the chief, that they would have 300, 400, 500 people that would be at a sporting event, but yet there is no protocol for safety. So I don't know if that's something when we, when you look at that, and I'm not trying to throw a kink in it, but is, when I reviewed it, that's, it's not anything that's out there I've seen nationally, but is that something that we might want to require based on that usage, that they have to have first aid kit, AED, or some type of a trained responder? I'm not sure how that, how that would work.
And I can tell you that of the 37 additional policies that we're looking into, many of those are safety-related. We're doing an entire audit of all of our safety policies with Mr. Duggan and with Chief Lorenz and the Student Services Team and the Safety and Security Teams to make sure that we are going to have all of those things up to date and in line with best practices. So we will review those as well, and if there is a need to add it in here, we'll bring this one back to you guys.
And just, of course, nobody wants an accident to happen, but we do require people to have insurance and indemnify the school district and release us and hold harmless. So in the event there is an incident, that the school district is protected from a legal
Moving on, the next policy is 9.50, Distrib- Moving on, the next policy is 9.50, Distribution of Literature to Students. This adds additions to the policy based on Florida statute that materials must be free from pornography and other materials that are prohibited must be age-appropriate, comply with state standards, must include considerations of the accurate portrayal of the state's broad racial, ethnic, socioeconomic, and cultural diversity. These are items that we've added into all of our different policies where they're applicable based on recent legislative changes.
And it also incorporates the exact language from a DOE training protocol from February of this year earlier.
Next policy is 2.261. This is Family Empowerment and School Partnership for Student Achievement. We added information in here based on last legislative session about substantial reading or math deficiencies and parental and guardian notification about identifying those deficiencies and the information that you have to communicate to parents and guardians, including any supports and barriers that have been noticed by the schools. Policy 2.231 is Compliance with Rules of the School Board. This adds info in line with Florida statutes about the Special Magistrate for Teacher Empowerment that says that a teacher who believes they've been directed by the school district or the school to violate general law or state Board of Education rules may request the Commissioner of Education to appoint a special magistrate. Policy 4.45 is Religious Activities. It adds new info from Statute 1003.45 that a principal of each school shall require teachers in a first-period classroom in all grades to set aside at least one minute, but not more than two minutes, for a daily moment of silence during which students may not interfere with other students' participation, and that a teacher may not make suggestions as the nature of any reflection that a student may take part in during that moment of silence. And Policy 9.40 is the final one today. That is Commercial Activities. And this one is just a minor update to district-level administrators so that as titles change through time, we don't have to keep coming back and revising policies. We just allow it to be consistent at the higher levels.
Very thankful for the updates in the efficiency of reviewing policies. Thank you. Mr. Duggan, thank you. Superintendent Connor, a very effective process. Do we have any questions or comments from board members?
Thank you, members of the board. We'll plan to bring these back to you on an agenda on January 16th for permission to formally advertise these policies for approval. Thank you.
Board member assignments and committees are next. Given that we've changed chair positions and vice chair and looking at the required committees for school boards in the state of Florida, we have the Value Assessment Board, which I've been participating in for the last two years. And I am going to ask Mrs. Marinelli to take on that role, if you're amenable.
Oh, yes.
Thank you very much. As well as the Audit Committee, asking Mr. Enos to sit in and represent the board on the Audit Committee, given your financial background would be an asset.
No, thank you. Yes, I will do it.
Very much appreciated. And I will take up the Council of Governments, and, which is a monthly meeting and periodically add to the agenda where we can report back to the board progress in those venues. Mrs. Penner has sent out Mr. Enos that the Audit Committee should be ready to meet for the first time with the, all the appropriate information in January. Thank you very much. And moving on to Safety and Security Updates. Superintendent Connor, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, we'll have Chief Lorenz, Jason Overbay, Deb Jackalone, Mandy Coker, and Michael Santagago, who are going to be presenting some updates around safety and security. So as the team transitions up, we'll make, we'll go ahead and transition over to that part of the presentation. All right, at this time, we'll hand it over to Ms. Jackalone.
Yeah, thank you guys so much. Good afternoon. Thank you for letting us come on. Can you hear me now? It's not a commercial. Okay, good afternoon, guys. Thank you so much for letting us be here today. We are going to give you some important updates to our safety and security protocols with a specific focus on our behavior threat management process. We shared with you all at one of the previous board workshops a proposed policy revision. We have some great updates. And I think throughout this presentation, you're going to see a very collaborative experience here in Sarasota. We have many departments working together to make sure that every student is safe and supported in a healthy learning environment. I'm going to turn the presentation over to somebody very special on our team, Mr. Michael Santagata. July 1st, he was appointed as the District Threat Management Coordinator, which was a statutory requirement. And he's going to share a little bit with you all what his role looks like, what he's been up to, and where he is going to be leading the district as we move forward with the threat management process. And I'm going to jump out and let Jason come up, since he has an important role in this presentation as well. So, Mr. Michael?
Thank you Superintendent Connor, members of the board. Thank you Superintendent Connor, members of the board and Madam Chair. My name is Michael Santagata and I serve as your District Threat Management Coordinator. And it's taken me over 20 years to get a seat at this table, so thank you. So what I'm going to do today is kind of give a brief overview as to where we started, where we are currently going, and then where we will be once January 1st comes, once we start off with a new model. So if we could please change the slide to our Commissioner, Manny Diaz. We have a number of trainings that have occurred. During the presentation, you'll hear me say over 30 trainings that we've done. But we've also done a number of trainings just on the, on the side with principals, assistant principals, behavior specialists. And this is a video that we always start off our presentations with. And it does a really nice job of setting the stage for school safety, not only from the state of Florida, but as it moves down here within Sarasota County. So if you could, please.
My number one priority is the safety of our students. Florida is leading the way to build a model that fits the needs and places an emphasis on proactive prevention. As a parent, I know how it feels to drop off my kids for school at the beginning of the day, placing my trust in others to keep them safe. Without you, none of this would be possible. And you will play an important role in safeguarding Florida's children, educators, and school staff. Thank you.
All right, and thank you for that. So not only does it set the stage for the trainings that we have and the message that we're trying to convey to our school staff, but it also does a really nice job of letting everyone know that safety is everyone's priority. It's everyone's responsibility when we start looking at schools. So where did we start? On June 9th of 2023, we receive what was called Florida Rule 6A-1.0019. This was something that kind of came to us from the state, but it was very important that we have this information. And I will say that Jason Overbay was on the front line of letting us know these things occurring ahead of time. So we were able to plan so that we made sure that we were meeting these deadlines or anything that was coming down from the state ahead of time. And so it was very helpful to have that. We didn't have a lot of time to operate. And by July 1st, we had to name a District Threat Management Chair. That was moi. I attended four days of training with the state in July. And when I came back, my first order of business was to provide professional development and professional learning to our school-based administrators. And this was done at our Summer Leadership Institute. After our Summer Leadership Institute, we also needed to get that information to the principals of all our charter schools. So we gave that presentation to our charter school principals as well. The next thing that had to happen was all of our principals had to name what they call a chair and a vice chair. And this is language that you guys are going to have to become very familiar with, because each school will have one. And that will be the person who receives the forefront of all the information when a threat occurs on their campus. It starts with them. So we had to provide, they had to name that. Then they had to assign what we call a Core Four. And so now, not only does each school have a principal, a chair, and a vice chair, but they also have this Core Four, which is someone with instruction or expertise in instruction or knowledge or expertise in instruction, someone with knowledge or expertise in counseling or mental health, someone with knowledge or expertise in administration, and someone with knowledge or expertise in law enforcement. So all of these people are now within our schools, have all been trained, or at least at this point in time in August, were at least named. Then we had to bring in a number of different people from our district office to become trained in the threat assessment so we could train the number of people that had to be trained within each of our schools. So we had eight people that came. Two of them were of our law enforcement officers. So thank you Chief Lorenz for that piece, to have them involved with us. That was great to have them provide that other lens. And you're going to notice, like, the theme with all this training is there is a multi-interdisciplinary kind of lens that everybody has. And that's done by design so that everybody can bring in their own knowledge or expertise within each of the cases that we start working with our kids. We also had to name a District Threat Management Team. So it mirrors everything that was done at the school. We have those same members at our district team. So we have to, as you're going to see what comes in January, every threat that occurs within the county has to be reviewed by not only the school team, but also by the principal. But then I have to review and sign off on each of these threats as it comes forward from January 1st on with this new model. Then we had to figure out how we were going to deliver all this training to everybody. And this was a monumental task in itself. So by doing so, we started on October 16th our professional days. And we now have at each school, an SRO trained, a school psychologist trained, a school social worker, the Core Four that was mentioned from before, and principals. So prior to the start of January 1st, we will have seven people at each school who are able to work with our encompassing, kind of our endeavors with threat management. November came, and in November, we had to provide an additional four hours of training to all of our principals, chairs, and vice chairs, which basically means that the Core Four people that were mentioned at each school received eight hours of training. But then principals, chairs, and vice chairs had to receive an additional four hours of training. So either eight or 12 hours to all these people kind of happened. All right, so where are we now? To date, we have 435 people that have received the Day One training. 185 had received Day Two, that's the principals, chairs, and vice chairs. 620 total participants, over 30 trainings. And again, this extensive endeavor included between eight and 12 hours away from their assigned schools. This was a task among tasks, to do that in a way so that we didn't take people out of the school at the same time. So it had to be staggered. That's why we had the amount of trainings that we had. That's why we needed the amount of trainers that we had to kind of fulfill that duty. The state also recognized the enormity of this task. And they offered the opportunity for large districts to have a deputy chair. So last week, we had a deputy chair on our new program specialist position within Student Services. Her name is Cindy Weitzel. Presently, right now, we have our schools creating and uploading student support management plans. For those of you that have been around in education, those are our old safety and supervision plans that we've had in place. And then we're also training our Core Four within each to use our new applications that we have to meet the needs of our Florida threat management model. There have been other things that have occurred along the way. Questions come up that we're not prepared for. We didn't expect to receive. And as Mr. Enos knows, we formed a great relationship, as well as Jason and I, with Angie Chesser at the Florida Department of Education. She has been an absolute valuable resource for us, and we can't thank her enough for how she's done with, how she's helped us in this process. All right, where are we headed? Our current model addresses threat assessments. The new model that we're moving to within the state of Florida addresses not only threats, but addresses students of concern. And this is going to be a big shift for our schools. And basically, what this does is it recognizes that we have students who have a baseline, like, behavior that we're all aware of. We're all aware of, like, our relationship-based teaching. So all this, we know our kids. And when we start noticing something different, that's going to bring into light that these kids need to be discussed by our teams. That's going to be the big shift. Because now we're able to provide the intervention, supports, and services that our kids need without waiting for them to engage in that threatening behavior. Okay? And then so for more on that intervention, supports, and services, our mental health coordinator, Mandy Coker.
Hi, good afternoon, everybody. As Michael mentioned, the big difference between our current C-STAG model and the Florida Threat Management Model really is shifting from identifying threats to school-based teams identifying concerning behaviors. Or in other words, observable behaviors that may elicit concern in others regarding the safety of others or their safety to self. And so prevention is the focus of threat management. Maintaining a culture and climate of safety is essential to the prevention of violence in schools. The Florida Threat Management Model focuses on a culture of shared responsibility that's, in that schools, sorry, in schools that empowers people who witness concerning behaviors to come forward with their concerns. Prevention, intervention, and postvention are part of a comprehensive strategy to increase safety and security in Sarasota County schools. As preventative measures, Michael shared a little bit about the professional learning that has already taken place. To date, our district trainers have provided over 200 hours of professional learning to school-based teams. During these trainings, teams are learning how to identify concerning behaviors, risk factors, and build protective factors in students. This new model focuses on intervening early with students, providing supports where they, where they are needed, and building relationships between the school, student, family, and community. We are really excited to see when we return in January the impact that this Florida Threat Management Model has on academic excellence. As staff are identifying concerning behaviors early, they're able to intervene early, building relationships with students. When students feel a part of their community, attendance will likely increase. When students are in schools and feel safe and supported, they are able to engage in academic learning. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Jason Overbay to share the Florida Threat Management Model and its relation to operational effectiveness.
Thank you all. We appreciate you letting us come in and talk about this today. What you have heard and what you're going to see as we continue to discuss this with you is the focus of the district, of us all coming together as one group. So this started many years ago, even before we knew that the Florida model was coming into place. We, we started training with Megan Taylor and Student Services doing youth mental health. We moved over with Student Services also into mindset training, de-escalation. And all of this is teaching our staff better ways of recognizing issues with kids before they become problems so that we can get the supports and services into place before they turn into something that has to be disciplined, where we're taking the kid out of the, the learning environment and things along those lines. So with that, we also, this Office of Safety and Security, we took over all of the security aides inside the schools. We began training them in mindset. We're also working on doing other de-escalation training and teaching them how to also be a part of this where we're identifying these areas of concern within students before they become problems and we can get them the services that we need. And all of these areas improve on the four areas of focus that the superintendent has set forward. So we're very excited about all of this that are coming forward. Our aides are now better trained, they're more professional. We're getting into all of the areas in the schools. We're making, we're not necessarily mentoring, but we're, we're meeting the kids, we're talking to the kids, we're finding out what's going on. We're getting into those areas of concern inside the schools. And we've seen initially, since this takeover by our office, we've seen a drop in a lot of the, the different discipline areas. And all of this is us coming together and seeing a focus as a group, as all of our disciplines coming together to reduce these things inside the schools this very first semester. That's our presentation. It was a very high-level, quick presentation on threat management. And we appreciate y'all learning and listening. And if you have any questions for us, we'd be happy to answer.
Mr. Enos.
Where are we at with the computerized program for documentation as it relates to the state with this?
So there's a couple of different applications. One is, are you talking about the Florida School Safety Portal?
Yes. My understanding was, and I wanted to, for the board and the public, because obviously the documentation purpose in this is so significant.
because obviously the documentation purpose in this is so significant, because ultimately provides services from everybody. So the question, I've heard it's supposed to be ready for the kickoff in January, so I just didn't know if there was any kind of an update to that, because I know that it just makes sure, and everybody and staff's job a lot harder. So the state hasn't released the state portal yet for us to upload. As you know, when you were chief, we did implement EDPLAN, which is compliant. They will be compliant with all of the state mandates for paperwork come January 1. We're starting sandbox training next week?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, okay, that's quicker than next week. So we are ahead of the game as far as that goes. We're still waiting on the state to release exactly how all of this is supposed to interface, but they're working more with these providers than they are with us as a district. EDPLAN assures us that they are ready and that they'll be able to do all of that. And again, we appreciate your leadership in getting us to that point way ahead of the game.
Thank you.
Ms. Marinelli?
Could you be specific and, and tell us, give us examples of what threats teachers would be looking for? And I, and I'm getting to threats versus misbehavior? And then, how is each child put in the system, and what does that mean for the child and their school career and parental involvement?
So when a threat occurs, which would be a student who conveys a message, either through writing, it could be verbal, it could be gestural, it could be through email, it could be through social media, it could be through texting, but when it conveys a message of harm to another student, we're considering that a threatening message. Once we have understanding or knowledge of that incident, it will be reported to the, the school-based chair. So we're going to operate everything as once or on the day that the event is received by the school-based chairs when everything will begin. They will begin with what they call an intake and disposition, which means they're going to have a conversation with the student, and they're going to make a determination at that point in time, is this something that can be addressed by the school-based chair, where they just kind of sit and have a conversation with the student? Or they're going to have the opportunity to refer it to what they're going to call the school-based threat management team. And that would be a team of those core four people, where they get together, and they're all going to have like a responsibility, where they're going to look at the information, talk with students, call parents if parents need to be called, and then have those conversations to make a determination as to what happens as far as those next steps. And those are the ones that, when those are finalized, those are the ones that I said mentioned earlier, the principal will review that decision, and then I will also review that decision.
Can I add to that?
Yes, go ahead.
To add to that as well, again, with this shift to the threat management, the hope is that we're intervening prior to threats occurring. So when we're looking for concerning behavior, our teams are being trained on recognizing student baseline data. So when we've noticed a change in student's affect, we've noticed a change in their appearance, we've noticed a drop in their grades, we've noticed a drop in their attendance, there's a concern for that student. So it's shifting away from like a disciplinary measure to noticing, hey, there is a concern with this student, so the school staff is bringing that concern to the chair. And as Michael just kind of walked through that same process. So anytime the concern is brought to the chair, and they begin that initial form of talking with the student, determining if it's going to go forward, the parents of that student are involved from the very beginning.
So just, just address, if, for a better word, how is that, if that child's is, information is put in the system, what all does that, I'm just going to use tracking, what all does that involve? I mean, does it follow that child, their whole, if, let's say they do something in first grade, does that follow them all the way?
We're keeping a couple of things separate here. So first would be the disciplinary portion. So if there's a disciplinary event that happens, that disciplinary event is, is followed just like it would for forever. There's no difference there. The threat piece, once threats are done, they are put in its own file in itself within the student folder. That does stay with the child throughout, through, but it's not a disciplinary infraction as, as opposed to it's a concerning behavior that happened, it's something that's, that we are, I guess, compelled by the state of Florida, that that information has to move within districts.
Right, I understand that part. I just wanted to, just so, you know, there, I have a concern, and I've always had this, is, you know, some things that are discipline and just kids are going through a rough time versus threat and all of this, and to make sure that, once appropriate interventions are done, then, you know, that child has a chance to just, it doesn't follow them for ever. I know it's in their file, but they're not going to be always known for something that they were going through.
Right, separate from their discipline file.
Okay.
And I know, and hats off to the state, because when you really look at this, this came out of the Marjorie Stoneman Douglas Commission, and the commission has always tried to find out, because when you look at the school shooting data, that there were warning signs when the kid, even when you look at, back to Sandy Hook, the kid was six or seven, and he was actually making drawings when they did the search warrant of, of behaviors that he was then writing and drawing in reference to killing and violence. So this is their, this is a way that we're going to try to, and we are the only state that I'm aware of that is, that is doing this, is trying to get to the services prior to the incident, to try to do that early identification with the use of the teachers, because when you speak to the teachers and the faculty, they are, they're aware of the students that have changes based on their home life and all these things. And this is a way to be able to get them in, you know, with Ms. Marinelli, to student support services, to be able to get them that, that, that treatment and that identification. And that's one of the things that everybody nationally has struggled with, is trying to do the identification and provide the services at a younger age before it happened, because we know that's the commonality. So again, this is from the commission, thinking outside of the box, to try to do that early identification, because prior to this, we were just using arrest data, you know, from DJJ, and that's not an, an indicator of that there's going to be any kind of violence at school, it's just an indicator of variety of things. So I, I appreciate, I know it's a heavy lift, I know Mr. Santa Gotta does a great job, it's Cochrane, you too, Mr. Overbay, but that this, hopefully, you know, Florida's, again, is the cutting edge in safety and security. I know it's a lot more work, but it also should make parents feel a lot more safer that we're, we're providing this at earlier ages identification-wise, and I think that that is really, that service back to the family is, is, as the times are now, that, you know, hopefully, this will have an immediate impact, but ultimately, we should be able to see it a lot longer down the road. So thank you again for, for all your hard work.
Thank you.
I just, what happens when we go through and parents are involved, and then they refuse any kind of service? What, what happens?
So I feel like we're very fortunate within this district, even within the model that we have now as partnering with parents, they're really driving the ship when it comes to their child and the decisions that we're making. Our job as a school staff is to be able to support the student when they're at school, make appropriate referrals, and ultimately, try to build up the education, not just within our staff, but within our families, to understanding what these supports and services look like and the purpose of them.
Mr. Edwards?
Thank you. I agree with Mr. Enos that, kudos to the state. I've been through many of the trainings and presentations myself through Max Schachter, who lost his child at, at Parkland, and we really have intensified the ability to identify threats proactively, so I'm grateful for that. Mandy, the one thing that I just wanted to point or ask the question is that when you were describing what might lead to threat behavior or, or be proactive, those, those behaviors, the way I heard them, would be assessments we would be making to provide just any interventions, not to prevent a threat. I just don't want parents to think that their child automatically will be moved into threat assessment, but that we are providing those, those assessments for, for academic interventions.
Yes, thank you for that, so absolutely. And I think that really is the big shift with this new model, is it's, it's concerning behavior. So just like we're, we do now already in the school, so thank you for bringing that up, and we have identified that through our youth mental health first aid training. I mean, our staff is trained to recognize these behaviors. I feel like what this model does is create another layer of accountability within our schools to ensure that when we see those, that our, our teams and our staff is intervening appropriately.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I think it's excellent, thank you, I do, it's really.
Anyone else have anything to add? Superintendent O'Connor?
Thank you, team. You guys have done an awesome job in explaining the heavy lift that it's taking under this new model, and we are, we're very thankful for the work that you've put in, and we know that the proactivity of this new model is going to reap dividends for us. I want to pivot a little bit, it wasn't on our agenda, but it's closely related to this, and just talking about, in the event that crises do happen in our schools, you know, whether that's a school-based threat or something that's coming in from Fortified Florida, that communication protocol that we use. And I know that question has been raised by this board on occasion, and so I think we're, we would like to seize this opportunity to talk a little bit out of that. I hate to put you guys on the spot, but we're going to put up our PowerPoint. And I did share this with the board last week in my board update, so Craig, are you, are you prepared? If you want to maybe, Mandy, if we can allow him to come over and present a little bit on that? Or can you do it from there?
I can, right there.
Okay. And then you guys can, chief, if you don't mind coming up, and we can answer any questions related to, essentially two messaging scenarios, when a crisis does happen on our campus, whether it's a safety and security initiated or a school-based initiated threat, and how that is messaged, so that our parents are kept in the loop, so.
Thank you, Mr. Connor. So we have a policy here, not a policy, but a way we kind of go, I guess I got to lean over here, I'm kind of tall, I guess. So we basically look at threats, they fit into really two different scenarios. One, safety and security initiated, which usually means that it came through Fortified Florida, FBI, police, could be social media, off-campus incident. And then the second threat is a school-based initiative, which usually happens on campus, could be possession of a weapon, an arrest, unfounded rumor, social media fits in this category as well. So basically what happens, this is a laundry list of what'll happen, and then I have a chart that all the principals have. So the Sarasota County Schools Police Chief will notify our chief operating officer or the chief of staff, who will then notify myself, the director of communications, if the chief of staff wasn't aware at that time, will be brought in, and he will then notify the executive director of student services, Ms. Jacklem. The situation would then be actively investigated, and the details would be gathered, because a lot of times what happens is we don't know the information right away, so we have to gather information before information can actually go out, because the last thing we want to do is put out false information. So then, a message will be drafted, and support resources would be arranged with the principal, if it's required. Message would then be approved by our superintendent, and if he's not available, it would be the chief of staff, chief academic officer, chief operation, and/or myself, or one of my designees. So a message will go out, we're not waiting on a specific individual, who will have the training to know when it should go out, but through our model here, we'd like the superintendent to have eyes on it first, if available. Threat management team protocols are then enacted, as you just heard here. The chief of staff would then notify the chief academic officer if she was unaware, and the superintendent with any updates. Then the chief academic officer would then notify the respective chief of the elementary, middle, or high school to connect with the principal, so that make sure that they're getting the supports they need. And then the superintendent at that point would update the school board. Now this seems like this was a long time, this might be five minutes, this might be 15 minutes that this all goes on. Then communication with the principal determines message, how it's going to be sent, whether from the district or from the actual principal themselves, and what time should that message actually go out to the school community? And then following the investigation, the threat assessment, the principal will then send a wrap-up message. So that basically looks like this, and this is what all of our principals have. So they basically have this chart, which will break down, and you'll notice up here in the blue, the top three blues, those are happening almost simultaneously, all of our offices are basically across from each other. And we get into that threat situation, and then figure it out, and then get the message out. Not, every situation is a little different, and not every situation will get a message, okay? Most will, depending on the severity of it, and I've made a promise to this board that when something was really severe, that within two minutes, an X message now will go out, if it's very, if it's, if it's needed, so that the parents aren't panicking, because we know that the kids today and the teachers today are on social media, they see it, it's out there, and we need to rest assured it's going. So the one thing I can tell everybody is they should follow us on what used to be Twitter, because that's the fastest way we can say something's happening. By the time we get in, especially with the communications methods we currently have, by the time we get a message out, it could, it could take 20 minutes, and by that time, your kids texted you 15 times saying, what's happening, what's happening, what's happening? So that's kind of where it is, we have both set up, they're very similar, and again, this was presented to the board, and it is on the website, and again, lightly look at this, because every situation is different, but this is kind of like the path we go down.
I want to reinforce, and I'm, will continue to be interested in the prevention intervention pieces, as they're front and center to all of this, so.
So thank you for allowing us to just share that. If there's any questions, we do have some of our experts in the room. I know, as we said, information travels fast these days, and many things that are happening in our schools, instantaneously, they're going out through text messages, and so you get multiple messages and multiple things that get out, and can get out of control and spiral out of control pretty fast. And so this delineates a system, a structure, a protocol, to make sure that we are communicating, at least from the district level, as accurately based on the information provided as possible. And each situation is nuanced and different, and so that may look a little different, but there is a plan in place, and we continue to look at this, and we are open to any suggestions to improving our processes as we move forward.
Mr. Edwards?
Thank you. The one place where I consistently get feedback is when a ma, and I understand some things get resolved but continue in investigation, so I, I understand that. But what happens is, when it goes to, into investigation, there's no communication to the public, and it feels to the public as unresolved, or not, not closed, if you, if you will. So some, something, when it's, when the matter is resolved or closed, that message needs to be communicated, number one, and number two, if it has been dealt with, but the, the investigation continues, I think that's also an acceptable response, because things have a way of finding life on social media when, when it's not been by the district officially resolved.
Absolutely, that is definitely understood, and we will work on that for sure. Thank you.
Further comments, questions relative to safety and security? Thank you.
All right, thank you, thank you, everyone.
Member comments in general? Mr. Edwards, anything you'd like to contribute? Mrs. Ziegler? Mr. Enos? Ms. Marinelli? Thank you all, it was a good workshop, very well-spent time for the board, and looking at this afternoon, we do have executive session for safety and security scheduled for 3:30. What is the prospect of moving that up, and is it the desire of my colleagues to do so? 3:00 amenable to everyone? 3:00 in room 315 for executive session, which gives us a 10-minute break, and to get upstairs, followed by, we will resume at 6:00 for our regularly scheduled board meeting. Thank you. Sterned.